Go ahead and call O'Brien County Board of Commissioners for February 14th to order. We're going to ask Commissioner Kiskin if he would say the invocation, please.
Pray with me. Dear Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this vibrant and growing county that we are all blessed to live in. We ask for the gifts of wisdom as we consider these tough issues that face us tonight and your gift of mercy as we travel home to be with our loved ones on this Valentine's Day. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Jake's going to come up, the Boy Scout, and he's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll join Jake, Jake, come right up here. Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, sir.
It's always nice to have our Boy Scouts here participating. So again, thank you, Jake, and welcome everybody to, on this February 14th. I hope our wives aren't too mad for having a meeting on the 14th, but we can all take them a couple chicken nuggets when we leave, I guess. Anyway, first, we need the approval of the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carries. All right, we need the approval of our January 2023 meeting minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion of approval of our January 2023 meeting minutes.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries, all right. All right, we need the approval of our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, we're up to our community development for our public hearing. So what we need, we need a motion to close this meeting and open a public hearing, please. Just to close our...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the meeting and open the public hearing.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we are now in our public hearing, and y'all know a, Commissioner Coven, he's on the way, he's stuck in traffic, so he will be here shortly. All right, Audrey.
Thank you. This item is a public hearing. This is to abandon a portion of Jernigan Road, approximately 2.72 acres. A few months ago, we came in and requested that this portion of Jernigan be abandoned. The commission did abandon it, and it was deeded over to the Joint Development Authority as part of the mega site, which is the Hyundai project. So now we're coming back to abandon, to request to abandon this portion of Jernigan Road. The portion in blue was actually owned by GDOT. It was there right away. It was, was to be deeded directly to the JDA. There was some miscommunication, and they deeded it to the county, so now the county needs to deed it back to the JDA. There was also, at the time we abandoned this, a cul-de-sac that was provided to the county to provide a turnaround because there's a cell tower here. With the abandonment of this portion, we need to abandon the cul-de-sac as well. So this section of road no longer serves any public interest because all of the access to the Hyundai mega site will come off of 280, and so this, this section is no longer needed. So staff is recommending that the board approve the abandonment of this section of Jernigan Road, and I can answer any questions if you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, does anybody here wish to speak for or against this? Our public hearing, okay. That is our only public hearing, so what we'll do, we'll close our meeting, then reopen back into our regular meeting. If I can get a motion for that, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close our public hearing and return to the regular meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, we will vote on this item. So if I could, we need a motion to approve or deny this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request to abandon the 2.72 acre portion of Jernigan Road on the southwest side of Interstate 16 and authorize the chairman to execute all necessary conveyance documents.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, we have our community, our non-public community hearing's first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 104 of the Code of O'Brien County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a first reading of an ordinance. We are required to have two readings per the county's ordinances on, on any changes. This is to Chapter 104, which is the derelict property ordinance. This, the county passed this ordinance about two years ago. It's modeled after state law. During the 2022 legislative session, the state legislature changed one of the provisions of the derelict property statute. That change dealt with appeals and the appeal process. It is a minor change, but we need to amend the county ordinance to be consistent with state law, and basically the change is they clarify that it, when you appeal, it's a de novo proceeding. This is first reading, so no action is required. We will bring it back to you at your March 14th reading, March 14th meeting for second reading and formal adoption, and I can answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. That was just the first reading, so no action will be taken on that. All right, next up, Ben, with our county administrator items. First one, item of his appointment of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Item one is the appointment to the planning, O'Brien County Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Stacy Watson. His term as a member of the planning is on the board expires February 28, 2023. He does wish to serve again. He submitted an application for this reappointment. If appointed, his term would expire February 28, 2027. Our recommendation is consider the appointment, reappointment of Stacy Watson to this board.
Okay, we need a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Stacy Watson to the O'Brien County Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire February 28, 2027.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, next up, this appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission, another appointment.
This appointment, Planning and Zoning Commission, this is Mr. Boyce Young's seat. He does not wish to be reappointed. Kevin Bowe submitted an application for this vacancy. If appointed, his term would expire February 28, 2027.
Okay, we need a motion to appoint.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to appoint Kevin Bowe to the O'Brien County Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire on February 28, 2027.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, we're down to O'Brien County Family Connections, our fiscal agent appointment.
This is item three, authorize O'Brien County Board of Commissioners to serve as a fiscal agent for O'Brien County Family Connection for the period of July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. This is a annual recurrence, that O'Brien County has served as a fiscal agent, allowing grant funds pass through us to this organization for years. So our recommendation is to approve the authorization to serve as fiscal agent for the O'Brien County Family Connection for the state fiscal year of 2024.
We need a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve authorization to serve as fiscal agent for O'Brien County Family Connection for fiscal year 24.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, that'd be Wendy Futch to serve that. Okay, all right, got a motion, the second, all in favor, any discussion on that? Wendy, we do say thank you for serving on that board. You do a great job with that, summer lunch and things. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all right. Next is the O'Brien County Connections Summer Lunch, Executive Director Appointment.
Item four is the appointment of, consideration of the appointment, Ms. Wendy Futch, the O'Brien County Family Connection Executive Director, to administer the O'Brien County Summer Food Service Program for the upcoming fiscal year, the state fiscal year of '23 to '24. This is a, another reoccurring annual event.
Okay, we need a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Ms. Wendy Futch, O'Brien County Family Connection, Executive Director, to administer the O'Brien County Summer Food Service Program for the years '23 and '24.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, okay, motion carries. All right, now we're down to item number five, Bryan-Bullock Mutual Aid Agreement.
Item five is the Bullock County Mutual Aid Agreement, and this is a standard practice throughout the state, where departments back each other up and utilize resources in a time of need. Our recommendation is authorize the chairman to execute the Bryan County-Bullock County Mutual Aid Agreement as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the chairman to execute the Bryan-Bullock County Mutual Aid Agreement for emergency services as presented.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. We're right down to item number six, the McIntosh County IGA for Law Clerk Services.
This is an intergovernmental agreement with McIntosh County for Law Clerk Services. During the 2023 budget process, State Court Judge Tomlinson requested to hire a full-time law clerk with the intention of sharing this position with other counties through intergovernmental agreements. McIntosh County would like to utilize the services of this new law clerk. McIntosh will reimburse O'Brien County $25,000 annually. Our recommendation is to consider this intergovernmental agreement with McIntosh County for the purposes of receiving payment for the utilization of law clerk services.
We need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the chairman to execute the intergovernmental agreement with McIntosh County as presented for the purpose of payment for the utilization of law clerk services.
Second. Second, any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, down to item number seven, Mill Creek Church Road Design, Phase Two.
Item seven is Phase Two of Mill Creek Road Paving Project. Thomason-Hutton has recently completed the Phase One for the paving plan for this road. Once completed, staff along with engineers from TNH met with residents along Mill Creek Church Road, discussed the scope and timeline of the project. Hearing no objection from the residents, the staff asked TNH to provide a proposal for Phase Two. They have done so. This will include title research, surveying, and data collection, preliminary design plans, right-of-way staking, and public outreach. If approved, this task order, just above $214,000, will begin with surveying work in late February.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the chairman to execute task order number 93 in the amount of $214,100 with Thomason-Hutton for Phase Two of the Mill Creek Church Road Paving Project.
Second, all right, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. We're down to item number eight, our Stryker Power Loads for O'Brien County EMS.
Item eight is a consideration of the purchase of 10 Stryker Power Loads for O'Brien County EMS. These are 10 units that actually fit on the back of the ambulance and help us load, or help the EMS load the stretchers into it. This is a budgeted amount for these strikers, was $360,000. Our recommendation is authorize the county administrator to execute a contract with Stryker for 10 power loads with warranties and installation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the county administrator to execute the contract with Stryker for 10 power loads with warranties and installation.
I'll second that.
Second that, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. We're down to item number nine, the Belfer, Belfer Contracts.
Item number nine is the consideration of Belfer tornado rebuilding contracts. Of course, we all know in April of 2022, we were hit by a tornado, suffered a lot of damage to our courthouse, administration building, other office facilities, as well as complete devastation of Hendrix Park. This is the consideration of six additional contracts, the amount of $606,000, or just above $606,000, and allow Belfer to continue with the rebuilding process for the O'Brien County facilities.
We need a motion for that one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing, authorizing staff to sign six additional contracts in the amount of $606,090.37 and allow Belfer to continue rebuilding O'Brien County's facilities.
I'll second that.
Second that, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? When we spend money, we raise our hands, so there's no mistaking who voted against, for, or against. But anyway, just so that this audience knows. Thank you, that is approved. Okay, we're down to item number 10, a St. Joe Cantler Private Development Agreement.
Item 10 is a resolution to approve a private development agreement between O'Brien County and St. Joseph Cantler Properties, Incorporated. St. Joe's is a Georgia corporation seeking to develop a medical office and a related use facility within the Ryanair Plan Unit Development Boundary within the city limits of Richmond Hill. This agreement will include payment from them for their proportionate share of road improvements of $816,000, and our recommendation is approve a resolution approving a private development agreement between O'Brien County and SJC Properties, Incorporated.
We need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a private development agreement between O'Brien County and St. Joseph County Properties, Inc.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, motion carries. Right down to item number 12, Effingham County Industrial Development Authority, option of agreement, purchase.
Item number 11.
I'm sorry, number 11, excuse me, that is the natural gas funding agreement.
It is the intergovernmental contract natural gas funding agreement. Savannah Harbor Interstate 16 Corridor Joint Development Authority, as famously known as the JDA, was created by four counties to attract economic development project regional significance to locate on the mega site in O'Brien County. In order to achieve that goal, the JDA of the state of Georgia and Hyundai Motor Group Metta Plant Incorporated, or LLC, entered into an economic development agreement dated July 21, 2022, which provides for the development by the company of the state-of-the-art electric vehicle manufacturing facility, multiple affiliate supplier facilities, and a joint venture battery manufacturing facility. EDA provides that the JDA shall construct certain onsite and offsite road rail improvements at its sole cost and expense to provide second access road. This road, in the EDA, also states that O'Brien County will provide $2.5 million for the road's construction. Since the original agreement, the state grant has been obtained to fund that road, the EDA provides that JDA will use its commercially reasonable efforts to cause the city of Claxton to provide natural gas distribution lines to the site. Claxton and the company has negotiated a natural gas facilities agreement, which Claxton will design, construct, and the company will provide the lesser of 65% or not to exceed $10 million. JDA since they have got a state grant for this road cost, would like to shift the cost over to this natural gas line, $2.5 million. Effingham, who also agreed to fund the road, has already agreed to that, of course, and the JDA has executed an agreement already with the company. This is an agreement with Chatham County to provide the $2.5 million needed for the gas infrastructure project, and this contract will allocate certain receipts due to O'Brien County from the RSA during the Phase Two payout as defined in the RSA to repay Chatham for the cost of the gas infrastructure project.
All right, we need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the chairman to execute the natural gas funding agreement with Chatham County as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, now, to item number 12.
Item 12 is a consideration of the approval, option of agreement, of purchase easement with Effingham County Industrial Development Authority. It's necessary to purchase an easement with Effingham County IDA for easement with Effingham County IDA for the purpose of setting the location of this regional sewer force main associated with Bryan County mega site. Attached is an option to purchase the easement for the purpose for the EC IDA and the easement document itself. This easement is vital to the success of the regional force main project and, of course, the development of the mega site. Staff recommends that the commission authorize the chairman to enter into an option agreement of purchase and easement from Effingham IDA for the purpose of setting the location of the regional sewer force main associated with the Bryan County mega site, and to authorize the execution of the final easement document at closing.
Anybody have any questions? Can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the chairman to enter into the option agreement for purchase of an easement with Effingham County and execute the final easement documents as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are down to our public comments section. Is anybody here? Lori, you want? Okay. And while we're waiting on Lori to look at the list, Les Fussell from City Council, Richmond Hill City, thank you for being here. I didn't see you till I looked up and stood a little while into the meeting. So thank you for being here, sir. All right, we have, is that DeeDee Williams? Yes, ma'am. If you would just come up and state your name for the record, and we'll give you five minutes to talk about whatever you want to talk about.
My name is DeeDee Williams. I own property adjacent to the Conley Track, and I know that y'all postponed that to next month. Willie Road was, half of it was ours and half of it was the Conley Track, and then they made it a public road, and so they took our half away. Now that it's being abandoned with this other thing, should the setbacks be from my property line, or should they be from the center of the road? I just, I don't know.
The property lines are set, or setbacks are set from center of the road, center of the line.
Okay, so they're abandoning the road, the dirt road, and giving it to this thing. So I'm not sure if this should be redrawn.
I'm not sure what that is. I mean, I don't know that I've seen that before, that map you have.
Yeah.
But that's going to be on our next month's agenda?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll get fully versed in that.
Okay, so is there something that I need to do prior to the meeting? I mean, should I go to the court records and find? I mean, I have the plat plan that shows the original line, property line, was down the center of the dirt road.
I think they measure from the center of the dirt road.
Yeah, what we can do, what we can do is get you in touch with community development.
Okay.
And maybe explain the reasons as far as the setbacks and whatnot.
Okay. Because as it is right now, there's no property markers on the Conley side of the road, but there's property markers on my side of the road. So the way it looks from this thing that they sent out, they're just using the abandoned road as part of their property as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, that map. But we'll get you in touch. Actually, if you'll speak to Audra and give her your number, she's over, Audra, that was up here earlier.
Okay.
And you give her your trade numbers.
All right, thank you.
She'll talk you through that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down here. Next person, Patricia Wilson?
Same thing, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Yeah, if y'all will just get with Audra, and she'll walk you through it. I appreciate y'all coming down here. But we'll be on the other end next month, so. Yep. Any other public comments? Anybody wish to say anything? Any commissioner comments?
I have one.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to memorialize the fact that there were 20 applicants for the planning and zoning.
Yes.
All great people, and that level of, you know, commitment to try to serve your community is fantastic, and I encourage those people to stay involved. And even though they weren't selected today, it was great to see everybody raise their hand for that.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to apologize for missing what looks like most of the meeting, but there was a wreck on 95 and a wreck under the overpass at 144. So it was quite entertaining. And then I left my, I dropped my glasses in the floorboard and left them, so couldn't read anything when I got in here anyway.
We just appreciate you coming. That's okay. Hey, it happens. And I don't believe, we don't need executive session tonight, do we?
Very agree.
Okay. So what we'll do, we'll take a motion to go into executive session real quick.
For the purpose of?
With the purpose of, what is it?
Real estate.
Real estate? Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of real estate.
Second then.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we will go into executive session for real estate.
I got a text right before I went to the door.